There we go. I think we are on now, for those of who have been waiting, we are back. Welcome to the 5:30 PM September 27th City Council Presentations Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. There it is. Now I can call it to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take any formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We've got a very full agenda for your presentations this evening, so with that, we'll just get underway with our first, which is recognize Amanda Wright of the Tidesville Police Department as the City of Tidesville's Employee of the Month for August 2022. And Chief Lau, would you come up?
Mayor and Council, it is absolutely my pleasure to present Amanda Wright with this award. Amanda is our manager of our crime scene area, and she is, this December will be 18 years with the city. And what's really more remarkable about that 18 years is how technology has changed what they do day in and day out over that 18 years. So we have cases, cold cases, that Amanda regularly checks to see if the technology has changed or improved, such as DNA. So back 20 years ago, touch DNA really didn't exist, certainly at an evidentiary level, and now it does. So Amanda is constantly going back over the cold cases and reintroducing evidence. And she's being recognized really specifically for one case because the write-up came from our detective division, but she does this all across the board. And in this particular case, it was a double homicide that the state attorney's office was able to get enough that, for their threshold, to prosecute. But I can also tell you, we have two cases that are actually being reviewed by the television show Cold Case because of the methodical way that Amanda and her crew in our crime scene area collect evidence. So it is for this and everything that she does that she has been selected for City of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So Lieutenant Wright, that's something to aspire to becoming, so that we can have the whole Wright family be a part of it. Next, we have, we'd like to recognize Took Conley, who is not present tonight. She's at her laboratory services in the water reclamation department, and she will present for us.
Hello. Took Conley also has 18 years of service with the city at laboratory services. We count on lab services to make sure all of our water and wastewater is safe to drink and clean to discharge. So the laboratory director is on his second year this year, and he nominated Took Conley for this, for this award because she is, not only has a depth of knowledge, but she likes to share, and she's very, she has a really strong work ethic and just takes on whatever comes her way, and she'll, she thinks about what she's doing. She's been helpful both at the management level of the lab, but also in training new employees. So she's just been a, just a great model employee for lab services and for the city as a whole.
Well, thank you. Thank you for nominating and presenting, and should he take that to her? Okay, thank you. All right, City Manager.
Next, the Tidesville Police Department will do a technology demonstration. Chief Lau will introduce the item for council, and I don't know, the demonstration will be actually down by where Chief Lau is currently, so I don't know if you'll be able to see, so feel free to move about to get a best view of it.
Stand up and look down, we'll see. I'm not sure what it's going to look like.
This is a really neat opportunity because roughly a year ago, October of 21, this council approved a consent agenda purchase for this item, and the item is called the RAP. And I gotta tell you, our staff, it is, it is an amazing, it's amazing to watch them as their wheels turn to constantly improve process and improve safety. They are constantly researching. Sometimes it's exhausting how much they research, but it's all in, in safety and, and efficiency. So without further ado, I'm not going to go into it because I'm not going to do near the justice that this will. I would like to introduce Lieutenant TJ Wright, and he is going to take it from here. But thank you so much for the approval back a year ago, and you're going to see exactly what that approval has done, so it's kind of cool to get you guys on the positive end of it as well, to see what it's done.
Well, thank you for thinking to share that with us, too. That's kind of, because I don't know what it's going to look like.
Before we begin, thank you, members of council, Mayor Diesel, and City Manager Larisse, for allowing us the time to demonstrate this equipment that was purchased through forfeiture funds. We consider this equipment as a game changer when it comes to combative subjects of all shapes and sizes. What we're going to do is demonstrate to you how we used to deal with combative subjects with the four-point restraint, and then we're going to show you a demonstration with the actual RAP and show you the differences in why we prefer the RAP versus the old-school style of dealing with a combative subject. Before we begin, I've been introduced as Lieutenant Wright. I've been with our department since 2007, a high liability instructor since 2015, instructing in topics ranging from defensive tactics, firearms, special operations tactics, less-lethal equipment, and one of our certified RAP instructors. Next, we have Sergeant Josh Byrne. He's been with our department since 2013. He's a high liability instructor as well since 2015 in instruction topics from defensive tactics and firearms. He also brings an extensive knowledge in ground combatives, and he's also one of our other certified RAP instructors. We have Officer Tyrone Logan. He's been with our department since 2021, and as he was going through our new hire process, he was fortunate enough to go through the instructor training as well, and our intent was having experiences all over the board, so we have high-level experience, and in his case, coming brand-new, fresh. So just to show how easy this piece of equipment was to get trained out and have everybody use. And we also have Officer Matt Gonzalez. He's been with us since 2019, serves on our SWAT team, and is also becoming certified as a less-lethal instructor. He's the fortunate one going to be put in all these situations here. All right, so we're going to start off with demonstrating the old-school way of it, which is the four-point restraint on a combative subject. I'll be talking to you as they're going to be doing the demonstrations. If there's any times for questions, feel free to stop and ask questions, and we'll be able to answer them back. The first important rule of dealing with anybody is getting the handcuffs properly applied. Once we get the hands taken care of, we can kind of slow some things down to deal with a combative subject. Dealing with the four-point restraint, now we're going to have to place the subject in a prone position on their stomach. This causes them to be on their stomach for a prolonged amount of time, laying them flat on the ground. We must be able to control their upper body while at the same time somebody is controlling their legs and lower, lower half. This might take two officers, it might take three, it could take five, just depends on the person and how combative they're going to be. At this point, we're going to place one cuff on the ankle, on one ankle itself, and then we have to feed that chain through the handcuffed hands. After we do this part, now we have to feed that chain all the way back to the other ankle and place the other cuff on the ankle.
This needs cooperating.
Yeah, yeah, I bet it's not that easy.
So that was going to be my next topic. The biggest factor in determining how long this takes is how defiant the subject is. If it's somebody that's relatively cooperative, it goes rather quickly. If they are defiant, kicking and screaming and all that, we could be down there for a prolonged amount of time.
What makes you decide to do this? Because I'm, I've never seen anybody in that position, so a lot of times you just handcuff them, and that's that. That's kind of another step, isn't it?
This is another step. If they're constantly kicking, if they're bracing their feet on the patrol car, banging their head in the patrol car, injuring themselves, damaging equipment, this is where we would take that next step. Yes, or kicking our officers or anything like that. So again, how long this takes just really depends on how defiant the person is. We also, on the contrary, though, we train our officers to look for signs of distress and to avoid incidences of positional asphyxia. So once they're properly applied, they know, get them on their side in this recovery position. You guys can take them out of that. Does anybody have any questions on that process? They're going to go ahead and take them out of that four-point restraint. If we were to have to pick up this subject, it could, we're going to have to have at least three or four people, one on each arm, one on each leg, loose clothing, sweaty, bloody. It's rather hard to pick somebody up in this four-point restraint. So while they're removing that, I'll continue for a minute, and then we'll bring up Sergeant Byrne. So much like any piece of equipment out there, we encourage our officers, if they find something out there, to let us know, so we can actually properly vet it to see if some, if it's something that would apply here at our agency. So I'm going to bring up Sergeant Byrne. He'll talk about how he came across this piece of equipment.
Thank you for, can you hear me? All right. Thank you guys for the opportunity. It was too much. There's a storm coming, so I'll try to be brief. Sometimes confrontation is unavoidable. Prevention of a confrontation is always our number-one goal, but there are instances, somebody who's heavily intoxicated causing disturbance at a bar, somebody suffering from a mental illness, somebody who's depressed, suicidal, an emotional juvenile who's fighting staff, faculty, police officers, or somebody who's combative and just doesn't want to go back to prison. Those are just some of the examples where confrontation is unavoidable. We have to respond to that resistance, and when we respond to resistance, we base all that off two things, our training and our equipment. This was our case to me, in the wake of George Floyd and everything else going on. Lieutenant Wright pulled some stats, we wondered our statistics. We had one deployment in a year of putting that four-point restraint on somebody, just because officers don't feel comfortable doing that. When we do that, we strain the diaphragm, it contributes to the risk of excited delirium we have to learn about, teach about. So that was our case. We wanted to find a better way. There's actually a substantial amount of research, data, and testing before we put into development any, or practice any, equipment. I won't bore you guys with too much of the statistics, but this is, when we were looking for a solution to the four-point restraint, we found the RAP. And the RAP was backed by medical professionals. Did you lose me? Still on?
Turn your back and forth.
It was backed by medical professionals. One of the biggest causes for injury or somebody getting hurt is the length of a fight. This mitigates that. Once it's on, the fight is done. It's much faster and easier to put on than you just saw with four-point restraint. So it's faster, it's safer, it's backed by medical professionals. We can carry them, you're about to see that here in it, and they can even still receive medical attention while they're in the vice. Without further ado, Scott, City Manager, say it again.
Right.
All right, so for the RAP, we purchased 10 total kits, so what you see there is a bag, inside the bags of the entire kit. We're going to show you what each piece is real quick. The idea behind it is eight is for patrol, any given time, four should be out during a day shift or out at night shift, and the others are just sitting there ready to go for the next shift. One got assigned to investigations, and one is in our booking room. Inside the actual kit is the ankle strap, there's the leg wrap, and then the harness. There's also a protective helmet in each kit as well, and in addition to that, spit hoods in one of the pouches as well. So that's what an entire kit looks like that officers will grab and have with them. In addition to those 10 kits, we also purchased enough ankle straps for each officer to have on their person or readily available in their car. You see Officer Tyrone Logan keeps his in his back pocket, ready to go any given moment. And that's about what the majority of our patrol officers are doing, they keep that ankle strap on them, because they just don't know when they're going to need it versus having to run back to the car. All right, so just like the four-point restraint, the RAP gets applied with handcuffs getting placed on the subject first. The RAP can be applied with minimally two officers, max four. If any of those is any more than that, they kind of start getting in each other's way. Three is ideal, but for this demonstration, we got two. So after the handcuffs are applied, they do get placed back in a prone position, but they're going to apply this ankle strap, and this ankle strap gets applied rather quickly compared to the four-point restraint. Once that ankle strap is applied, that subject gets rolled over on their side, and they get put in that position of respiratory recovery, and pretty much, one officer can control that combative subject. It might take two, but for the most part, one officer can control that. At this point, that officer will call dispatch saying ankle strap has been applied, and we need the RAP en route, because they're not going to leave that person anymore, they're just going to stay there, and that subject can stay in that position for a prolonged amount of time compared to being prone and stuck on their stomach and hard breathing on the diaphragm. All right, so once that's applied, then the officer's going to arrive on scene, or the backup officer may have it in their car, they're going to go get the whole kit itself, and they're going to get the leg strap ready. Now, the subject gets rolled back onto their stomach briefly. They're going to grab the strap that's on the ankle strap itself and lift the legs up and slide the leg strap underneath them. The company was great, they gave us awesome writing, so as long as we're seeing the writing, we're not going to mess this up. There's three straps on there that are kind of described as seatbelt buckles. They're going to attach the three straps, and then everything gets put on firm and And then they're going to double-check for tightness, just to make sure it doesn't need to be any tighter than what it needs to be, but again, firm and tight. Now, once this is applied, we roll them back over into the recovery position. And just for demonstration purposes, Officer Gonzalez, if you can just kind of show that you have really no movement in your ankles or legs. So our last step now is putting on the actual harness itself, the chest harness. Again, they got awesome writing on the back, so we can't mess it up. If we don't see the writing, we put it on backwards. There's two straps that are brought in between the arms and the chest, and then there's one strap called the tether harness that's going to go from the chest to a D-ring that's on There's also a carabiner on the back that the handcuffs can be applied in, so they're fully restrained on the back. If they are compliant, we can adjust those restraints to the front, to a D-ring up front, or we can have the option to have one hand in the back on the D-ring with the handcuff and another set of cuffs on the front, and they'll be sitting just like that. And now, at this point, the RAP is fully and properly applied, and these, these officers are going to be asking themselves a series of three questions. The first question is, are they leaning back? So if applied properly, the subject will be able to stay in this position. Second question is, they're going to ask themselves, is there a gap between the chest and the harness? This ensures that there is nothing restricting the diaphragm and allows the subject to breathe free and clear. And then the last question they're going to ask each other is, is the subject breathing? Chances are the subject's going to be talking to us, so they're going to be, obviously, yes, he's breathing. If they're not talking to us, then they're going to look for signs of the chest rise and fall, just to make sure the subject is, is breathing. So those are the three questions they ask. The reason for those questions is designed to get these officers to get out of that mindset that they just put this on, open up their thinking for a second to make sure the subject is, has the RAP properly applied, and that they're able to breathe and able to sit up. All right, at this point, it's time to get the subject in the car. If they are still carrying on, throwing their head around, we have a concern that they might want to slam their head on something, we're going to throw this protective helmet And then they're going to do a two-man carry. As you can see, the leg strap has built-in handles for the legs, and very easy to pick somebody up. Should a third person be needed? Third person can come over and grab here or work in different areas, but minimally two people, and again, depends on the size and the shape of the subject. And then they just get loaded into the patrol car, just like they are sitting like that sideways in the car. Seatbelt can be safely put on them. When it was the old four-point restraint system, they're actually laying on their side and while they're heading to the jail, wherever it is that they're trying to head to, the concern is, are they going to roll out of that, that spot? We have no concern anymore being properly applied in this, sitting in the backseat of a patrol car, rolling over anymore. So that's, that's our demonstration, so at this time, I'd like to open it up if there's any questions.
First of all, I think it's pretty, pretty cool that you went and sought something different than what we were doing.
That was, that was all Sergeant Byrne found this.
Sergeant Byrne's outstanding. Sergeant Byrne's outstanding. You know, and it certainly looks interesting, but it definitely looks, I don't want to use the word comfortable, but it looks safer.
So with every equipment that we have, we use them ourselves first. Our officer gets tased, and we carry him tased, and we learn how to use it. Same thing with the wrap. And the common theme and joke from different classes was, I like to watch football and sing. You saw the four-point restraint before, it actually is pulling from his ankles, pulling down, putting pressure on the diaphragm. And like I said, when we're dealing with someone like this, whether they're this combative, we have to resort to this, we're worried about excited delirium, what substances they might be on, and this is for them. This tool protects whoever we're putting it on. Right now, he's sitting up, he's comfortable, there's, it's literally taking pressure off his diaphragm, and on top of that, he can receive medical care while he's in, he can sit on a stretcher or anything, he can get into an ambulance. Everybody that's seen it has been a fan.
And it certainly looks, like I said, safer, and again, all the things that you said about it, and the fact that you guys have gone through it. Couple of my questions, one of them is, how many departments have this? Is this really new, or are we way out in front of everybody on this?
The, we are the first in the county to bring it, we're not the first in Florida. There were agencies nationwide that had put it into practice. We're leading the way on that aspect in the county. We have presented it to other municipalities, and believe that Melvin has already picked it up, and they are now using it following suit from our presentation we gave them. And I think it's just a matter of time, in my opinion. This company does not advertise, like some of them taser some bigger companies, but I think it's just a matter of time before every law enforcement agency has something like this. The, again, I use the word archaic for the four-point restraint, or we have another one called the hobble that some people use, just, this is the care that we want to provide, this is the service we want to provide to the citizens of Tidesville, mitigating all risk that we can to a subject. We've had, I told you, we had one deployment with the four-point restraint, we've had nineteen deployments since this went into effect this last year. To put that into context, that's nineteen less tases potentially, pepper sprays, a physical fight or confrontation that was ended immediately with a seven-point restraint and get them where they need to go.
Well, it certainly looks like an evolution upward, and I appreciate that. Vice Mayor.
I'm not sure how to start this, because I'm getting pretty emotional about what I'm seeing here, because what you have shown is the humanity of our police department, and that means a lot to me, for sure. I've never been handcuffed in my life, and honestly, just starting with him being handcuffed, it bothered me, honestly, because we all are human beings, and no one deserves to die just because they made the wrong decisions. And for you all to come up with something like this, it just shows humanity, it shows that police officers have feelings also, and that they don't want anybody to die, and what you're trying to do is, that's protect them, protect yourself, but protect the community too. So my hat is off, I really appreciate you going through, I would never do what you're doing there, for sure.
You can let him out if you want.
Yeah, you can let him out.
He's been there awhile.
But, I mean, I just, I mean, we are so blessed to have a police department that cares so much that they don't want to do things that are gonna be lethal to another human being. That says a lot about your heart, and a lot about the service that you want to give out to citizens, so my hat is off to you all. If this was done with George Floyd, he would be alive today.
Absolutely.
And you gotta think about that, and that's just, I mean, honestly, again, I just don't think there's anything that a would-be criminal or someone who has committed a crime, they should not end up dead just because we didn't have the right equipment, or maybe a police officer got too angry and was not trained. And what you demonstrated was, you've got not only, I don't call you elder, but an older police officer, more experienced police officer, but you're also bringing in the rear with your younger police officers who also want to be trained, and to be able to train others on how to do this. So thank you so much. I think this is probably one of the most moving demonstrations that I've seen since I've been on council, and I really appreciate what you all are doing, for sure. I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Amanda, in a relationship?
Yes.
What is that, that's your wife?
That's my wife.
God bless you.
I'm glad you asked that question, I didn't know that.
I'm not nosy, I mean, you know, I love the fact, I mean, you're talking about a family of service, and I really appreciate, you know, your heart and Amanda's heart as it relates to what you all are doing.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Very touching, thank you.
Member Stokoe.
I actually appreciate you asking that, because I was curious too. Um, you know, now, I just want to say thank you for the presentation, because I did not look up what this was like on a video prior, and I was, I don't know what I was thinking, I was thinking some like magical, like it would just happen automatically or something, I don't know. So I just appreciated the presentation. I think you touched on my question that I, what I did have already, saying that you guys only used the four-point restraint once. It sounds like other tactics, because it does seem very cumbersome to try to do. It seems like you were having to resort to tasing, pepper spray, other things to try to restrain citizens.
Yes, and that, and also, it's very dangerous for us to apply it, as well as it's dangerous for the subject itself, so it was really something nobody really wanted to do.
Yeah, so I appreciate just the proactiveness of trying to think outside the box and come up with something. I have a big heart and passion for that. I do have a question, have there been any, so it's, it sounds like you guys have used it nineteen times, have there been any issues or concerns or things that you may potentially need or lessons learned moving forward that you've noticed?
We have not had one incident involving an injury or any issues with this device as of yet. There was, there is an institute, I didn't even notice before doing the research on this thing, like I was saying, there is actually a substantial amount of research to train the cadre to do before we implement stuff like this. So there's an institute for the prevention of in custody deaths, and they did a research on this and found zero contributing factors to an injury or death from this device itself.
And you're getting good feedback from the officers that really enjoy using it.
So the numbers, I would refer to the, could be important deployment with the four-point restraint, as you said, cumbersome is a good word, we've had nineteen with this this last year.
And that was two years, two years with one deployment.
Wow.
This is just one year itself.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Member Robinson.
Well, thank you, guys. I know that it appeared to be very simple, but when you are in the rain, when you are fighting against the element and the person, even that, even though it's very nice and it's very good, can be difficult to put on an individual. But thank you for going through the measures to do that, because that will save a lot of lives. Thank you.
And I would conclude, by every time I speak to you, or in front of you, or about you, I use the term hero. And I definitely feel like this is another angle of being heroes. And certainly, Chief, I think it starts with your whole mentality. I see your feelings about this written all over it. It's a, it's a tip of the hat to humanity to do the right thing, that even though whoever you're dealing with is doing something stupid, has lost control of their emotions, you want to do the right thing and you don't want to do it in a harmful and fatal way. I like what you wrote, or what you said, and I wrote it down, and I think it'd be good for all of us to say, prevention of confrontation is number, our number one goal. I truly believe that, I see that, and I appreciate that. And again, I will say, thank you for being my heroes. Thank you, this is well done, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you, guys. What are you gonna, just leave them there now?
We're thinking, take a break.
That wouldn't work. We'll hold just a second here. That was well done, very appreciated.
Sorry, I'd be remiss, though, we took this to Chief Lau, and absolutely, he said no-brainer if this is gonna improve the ways of doing things, didn't even have to ask twice.
You know, and like I said, and I didn't even have to ask, I could see his personality and his feelings for humanity written all over this. You guys didn't do this because you want to do something easy. You didn't do this because you want to, we want, you did this because you care about the people you're having to do this to.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager.
Yes, sir, we're on the item 4C, which is a presentation by AECom for the proposed City Hall and Public Safety Complex project. And with that, I'll turn it over to the AECom team.
You got more volunteers for that thing right here. If you want to hold just a second, that's fine.
And we want to go ahead and pull the presentation up.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Lyons.
Hey, you little button there, the bottom, there you go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Lyons from AECom, and we're very excited to be here to talk about your government center project. Our team that we have here today, we've got Steve Loomis, he's our Public Safety Architect, Zach Naraki is the City Hall Architect, and then John Dorman is a funding specialist. So the goal of this project was to identify the future building needs of the city, the budget that would be required to meet those needs, and funding, grant funding opportunities to help fund the projects. The process that we went through, we started with doing a survey of city employees to find out what their building needs were. We then did a series of interviews, we toured all the city offices, and put together a spreadsheet of all the city's building needs. A big thank you to all the city staff that took time out of their day to meet with us and go over challenges and opportunities with their existing office spaces. So once we had the spreadsheet together with current and future employees and square footage for each department, we turned that into building blocks, that became floor plans, and eventually, the conceptual renderings that you're gonna see tonight for these two complexes. Our presentation is divided into two segments, we're gonna talk about public safety first, so I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to share more about the public safety complex.
Thank you, Council, appreciate it.
He's got one too.
Got it here, is this, is this on?
Yeah.
Cool. It seems appropriate, we're talking about public safety right after that demonstration, right? And be able to serve the community through appropriate police facilities. Next facility here, talk a little bit about, as Jennifer was mentioning, the process that we went through was to look at all the space needs. We did interview most of the, most of the department, and each of the department heads to see what their space needs would be for the new police department and facilities that would accommodate that. It includes three buildings that we looked at, actually, not police, police and fire, sorry, meant to say that. Includes three buildings as we looked at it, not a location yet for that, but Public Safety Building, which will include police headquarters, fire headquarters, community policing. As you can see, the department is very much about the community, so having a community room in, within the Public Safety Building was really important. And apropos of today, it has the new, would have the new Emergency Operations Center with the appropriate facilities for the emergency operations, as well as the police and fire department there. So that's what you're showing, showing here. I could point to the slide here that shows you, let's see if I got that right, yeah. Right here would be the Public Safety Building itself, if you can see that?
Yes.
And that's, that's the major part of the project. Second parts would be the operations and logistics, there are a lot of things that are within, within, that are required for the department, that need to be housed in certain areas and stuff, for the mobile commands, special, specialty vehicles and so forth, all to be housed there, and then a fire department, fire station, again, co-located, so you have all those public safety functions put together. I would say that the fire station does not necessarily need to go there, but, depending on the location overall, it's really about coverage within the department, or within the city, for the fire station itself. Next slide here, I'll go to that. So it's a little hard to see here in terms of what's, what's up on the slide, but suffice it to say that the front part of the building is really the community room, so the public-facing functions. There is actually a place for the historic police car that's out there, if you guys have seen that, right? And there's also a place in the lobby for the fire, the fire engine that's sitting over there across the street, housed there. So those two would be in the lobby, so again, brings in the community together. Things that are located within this first floor is really the officer hub, again, servicing the community, making sure that they're having access to the records, having areas for break rooms and so forth for the department, as well as some holding spaces for them. And going on up to the second level, the police administration, fire administration, and that Emergency Operations Center, as I was mentioning, that is included within the second floor of the space. We included the 911 dispatch area, which is currently housed in the police headquarters, and that's up on that second level as well. That's important for that communication to go with, along with emergency operations. So that's the overview of the, of the project itself. In terms of articulation, where it's gonna be located, this is site agnostic, so we don't know where the site's gonna be yet, and that's continuing, working with the city here about where the site might be. It can be city-owned land perhaps, or perhaps if it's something that's purchased in the end. Requires about, the ideal site that you see right, right here, is about eleven acres. If you need a little bit more than that, or less than that, or you have that space, you can separate the fire station, it's about eight acres or so required for the, for the police, police headquarters administration building there. This just shows you a couple of renderings of the overall building itself, and a couple of different ways to approach that, one being more in the, in the style of a sort of a southern Florida area, or, or around this area here too. And then a little more in the brick sense for the fire station, again, these are all just preliminary concepts that you might have for this. May not like the brick, but ever, but it's one of those things that you might want to look at there, or, or be precast like it is here, right? So, anyway, so brass tacks, comes down to the cost estimating for these things. Let's see here, hopefully you can see this, the Public Safety Building itself, the main building, is about seventy-seven thousand square feet, which is, is an increase from what they have, because many of the things are undersized, or they're not even there, right? So that's that. It's about five hundred dollars a square foot, and that gives you the estimate there that you see for that building. Fire station, around thirteen thousand, this is very typical, a three-bay fire station, typical of what you see here. And then the logistics building, which is really just a warehouse. Again, hurricane, all of these would be hurricane, designed for hurricane winds and so forth, that would be there. So that's ending up the overall cost for that. That's just the construction cost, hard construction, what you put into the building. And the next really would be talking about the overall project costs, as we talked to the city officials, Kevin and others, that you have to incorporate different things into that, which would be like the fees that you have to design the building, different permitting fees that you have, acquiring land, it was not really included in this estimate here, and then other kinds of things. So we give it a range, because it's not really known at this time, somewhere in the fifty to eighty-five million dollar range for that. Again, that would be defined much more as we get into the detailed design for that. Funding opportunities, so we're gonna talk a little bit about things, and I'm gonna turn it to my colleague, John, who's gonna talk about how you pay for all this.
Yeah.
Before you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, thank you, sir.
Before you give it to the funding guy, because I really want to hear what he's got to say, but how'd you come up with, what was it, five fifteen a square?
Five fifteen, that's based on really current costs.
Really?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's crazy.
Yeah, it's crazy, yeah. And we're seeing, actually, and it's, it's rising significantly in the last six months or so, the overall cost. We're seeing, police departments were doing one right now, and I did police headquarters over in St. Petersburg, and that was a little bit less, but that was about four years ago. And then Fort Lauderdale Police, which we're doing right now, the cost is very comparable to this right here, and we have actual hard costs on that, so we know what kind of costs could be projected for these kinds of things. Again, they're, they're central services facilities, so there's a little bit higher cost to do that, to make them stand up to the hurricane winds and all that kind of stuff. So that's where the cost comes out, just comparable facilities, not, not something I'm pulling out of the air, but something that really is what we're seeing today. I would say, the sooner you act, the better on some of these things.
No kidding.
Because that cost is continuing to rise up, and we've seen some really strong increases recently, so.
I, I'm just concerned- I, I'm just concerned about that, just because we know we have standards when it comes down to building a school.
Mm-hmm.
And now you're talking about a building like this, and I know the school cost is not that high for sure.
Right.
And, you know, of course, we pushed back even with the cost that we had to do for the school, so just.
Again, we'll, we'll continue to refine that, but that was just a comparable cost to other facilities in the, in the region, so.
So, was it more for that brick building?
No.
No. Good.
Yeah.
Might have been less. Had to paint them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that kind of brought me into, it's like you, Vice Mayor, that kind of brought me into when you were talking about the price at this time, and you went right into that. And I won't ask for a number, but I'm assuming it would have been a lot cheaper last year and then the year before.
Probably.
And certainly before 2020.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure. I mean, we've seen projects jump up 20%.
Like we missed it.
And have delays in them for, for material availability and so forth.
And like you said.
Yeah.
It'll probably be more expensive next year and in the next five years.
Yeah, so we, again, we can't predict the economy, but yeah, it's, it seems like it's going to go.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, that's exactly what the mayor says, and that's the, the challenge that we have. You know, when I even talked to my daughter about buying a house two years ago, I think buying the house, and now, of course, and interest rates is going up.
Sure.
For sure. So, hopefully, the guy behind you is going to come up.
Timing is a factor.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, timing, tying some of, of the essence.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Dorman, glad to be here. I always hate having to follow up with Steve, because Steve sets a number and.
You've got to mean it.
Go find it. So, but I do want to bring up that AECom, being a large infrastructure firm, there's a lot of big infrastructure, roads, buildings, water systems. Many communities, counties, states are all looking for dollars. And so, following the COVID, ARPA funding, and then when the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act came out about May or so ago, I began reading the bill. AECom began reading the bill. We've come up with 418 different funding, unique funding opportunities that make up that $550 billion. Now, those dollars are evenly, pretty much evenly allocated over a five-year period of time. And so, you'll see up here, I've identified some from the infrastructure bill. I've identified maybe what might be available through ARPA. We can't forget about the normal federal appropriation process, because there are dollars there. And then, of course, there are some opportunities at the state level as well. So, Steve, just go to the right. So, I can't honestly read this up here at this point in time, but you can see the second column to the left really is the infrastructure or the source of funding. I do want to bring up one of them up there that I think is really a, a, a great opportunity, and that is the BRIC grant opportunity. That stands for Build Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. That is through the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, and it basically is funding that would enable a reduction in the loss of property, lives, and it deals with natural hazards. I do not believe that, that that funding can support all of the cost of the building, but it can certainly support any raising of the building to ensure that there's no coastal storm surge, any flooding, also things dealing with wind. So, certainly think that the BRIC program would, would be one to look at. I would also bring up the ARPA, or the American Rescue Plan Act. I know that the $350 billion that was allocated by the federal government, by Congress, has been allocated. There have been two separate allocations. I believe the second allocation has come out between May and July of this year. I believe Titusville received some of those dollars. But let me just say, this, the state of Florida received a significant amount of funding. Those dollars must be obligated before the end of '24 and spent by the end of '26. Those dollars can be used for any facility that provides services to the community. So, the U.S. Department of Treasury expanded the available use of that to deal with water, to deal with broadband, but also to deal with services that a community would provide to its citizens. So, if there are any unobligated dollars at this point in time, either in discussions with the state or with the city, that may be something to look at. There are also two available opportunities that, that are specific for Emergency Operations Centers. One is through FEMA. It is actually where congressional requests are made, put forward. Forgive me, I can't see the amount, but every year, an allocation is asked for by different congressional delegates for their, their, their citizens. Those dollars are passed through, through FEMA. There is also the funding through the BURN Act that goes through the Department of Justice. Both of those are annual dollar amounts that come out that, that the city could certainly utilize to help out with their Emergency Operations Center. And then there are actually, I believe, three of them up there that are through the state. The state typically has requests coming from representatives and senators that are coming from their, their constituents on actual capital outlay requests. And you can see what the dollar amounts are that have come out of this year. So, I would certainly suggest that that may be a direction to take. So, those are some ideas that, that are out there, in addition to any type of loans or, or bonds, or any type of P3, public-private partnerships. So, answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah. I just went through, I built 110,000 square foot school in VR, and we went through the bond program. Of course, we had a guaranteed revenue stream called a student, of course, and all we had to do was have the, the number of students we needed, and we could afford the thing, which we did. I was intrigued, though, by when you use the word "grant," my eyes just, you know, light up, because grants says, "We don't have to pay it back." Correct. And so, I, you know, one of the things that I've always wanted was for Titusville, who has sometimes been looked at as the redheaded stepchild, we're, we actually have the oldest building in Brevard County, as far as the city building is concerned. And I think it's time for us, being on the space coast, and really, you know, we are the county seat, believe it or not, that we deserve and our employees deserve better than what we have right now. And this building was constructed, I think, in 1969.
It's, it's 50 years old.
Okay, it's 50 years old. It's not as old as me, but it is, it's pretty old for sure. So, I'm pretty excited about the presentation. I, I really liked the opportunity to have the city look at what we can do to bring on those grants. Of course, we're going to have to have some debt service, for sure. But I, I must remind the council years ago, when we wanted to build the hospital that we have here now, there was a lot of naysayers and said, "We don't need it." But all they had to do is just go into the basement, believe it or not, where we had our pharmacy, and you realize you needed more than what we had there. And of course, those who said no are those who are utilizing that facility today. So, sometimes you have to push forward on things when you hear a lot of people saying, "No, no, no," because at the end, you've got to have a vision of where we want to go. And to me, that vision, in my opinion, is a new facility to show off what Titusville is and where it's going. So, I appreciate it.
If I might add one more point to this, and this is what we're seeing some communities do. There are traditional ongoing calls for other types of infrastructure or other types of projects. As I said, AECom's identified 418 opportunities. Capturing those grant opportunities could unobligate funding that you may be using for that, that could go for other purposes that the city decided to utilize. So, there's some strategy in that. Didn't want to bring that up as, as an option up on the screen, but if there are other places, we've offered to the, to the city the, the use of the tool, free of charge, please use it. Look at all of the opportunities. We'd love to sit down and talk, just freely talk with you about what those are, and maybe see if there are other locations that you might be able to pay for some federal, using federal dollars over here, that free up other dollars over here, so.
Member Stokel.
Yep. That actually was going to be my question, is if we could see those opportunities, that list, and then get a copy of the PowerPoint, just because it is hard to read, but that looks like some good information. And then, my question was, is it a fair assessment to say that in regards to these ARPA funds, that does have a deadline on them? In your opinion of doing this, do you feel like it would be advantageous for us if we were eligible for some of those ARPA funds, that it would be wise to potentially pursue this sooner than later, just because of more opportunities? Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball and know what opportunities will be available in four or five years, but just in what you've seen as far as grant opportunities are concerned?
Well, many of the communities that we've had conversations with have shovel-ready projects, and so they're doing things that they know they can do now. Now, on a project such as this, could it be designed? Could it be planning that goes towards that? Could it go towards lead service line replacement of pipes? That could help out. You know, there, there's a lot of opportunities to utilize different funding to supplement, but ARPA is one of those. It will, as I said, it has to be obligated by December of '24, so that, that would be, I'm sure, I'm sure that's already being discussed and thought about, but tho, those dollars are going to be recaptured if they're not, not obligated or spent.
You good? Yeah, I would just conclude by saying that this is, anytime you propose a project of this magnitude, it's, it's a turkey situation. It's one of those things where, gosh, are we going to spend that much money? Well, it's one of those things where you don't spend that much money today, it's going to be more tomorrow. It's just the way it is. As we discussed earlier, had we been able to do such a thing two years ago, four years ago, five years ago, I don't know whether the cost would have been less, but it would have been a lot less. So, with that, I appreciate the presentations from all sides. Is there anything you guys have or want to ask us?
We've actually, after we finish the Lowell Safety Complex, we're going to move to the City Hall complex.
Okay. Well, I thought we've got enough on the board right now. $43 million is, I don't go any higher than that. All right, so we move to the City Hall. Keep it under $43 million.
Okay. I'll just mention really quickly, on this next slide, we have next steps for the Public Safety Complex, which would be hiring an engineer, architect, to actually design the project. The concepts we have are very preliminary. We really just talked about space and dollars. We didn't spend any time talking to the city about architectural styles, so that would really be in the next step of the process. Also, applying for grant funds, I would recommend doing that right now. There's no, nothing holding you back from doing that. And, of course, securing funding and selecting a site. One thing I wanted to mention about the site is the reason why this site is proposed to be outside of downtown is because your current Emergency Operations Center is downtown in an area that's subject, subject to storm surge, so it's not an ideal location. So, that is, that is one of the reasons why the site is planned to be moved out of downtown. So, we'll move on to the City Hall if there aren't any other questions.
Thank you. I'll, I'll speak quickly, just knowing the time, but Council, Mayor, thank you for, for having us here. So, as Jennifer mentioned, we had met with a lot of the departments within the city, police and fire, as well as all the other city departments. And so, looking at a consolidated government center led us to actually two different campuses. So, what you saw was the proposed Public Safety Campus, and what we'll talk to now is, is the site we're standing on now with the proposed new City Hall. Just to give some context to what we're looking at, the existing building that we're standing in is to the right, north would be to the left, and what we're proposing is a parking garage and a new City Hall, which would provide parking to downtown. The City Hall would consolidate government, different government departments into one building, which just gives some efficiencies, shared spaces, shared conference rooms, things like that. As, as mentioned, we have not selected an architectural style. However, we did, we did show two different kind of options for this area. We think being right on the water gives opportunities. We were showing things like rooftop decks and viewing areas for, for space flight missions and things like that. What was important when we spoke with the city was a lot of activation of the street, and so we wanted to show a, a public plaza that would be right in front of the City Hall down at grade. Now, keeping in mind storm surge and, and other hurricane impacts, we actually raised all critical city functions about 13 feet higher than street level, and we feel that we can also activate the street, but, but keep the important items and spaces above. Here's a, a look at one of the options from down the road on US 1. And again, there, you can see how we're, we're keeping to the street level. The plaza would be up a few steps, and then you can see kind of a artistic moment there for a ramp and stair to get up to that 13-foot level above the current street. I mentioned the parking garage to the rear. That gives the opportunity that, that citizens arriving in a car would be able to go directly into the building at that level. Another view of the plaza off the street. All right, and again, getting to cost on this, rough numbers, same, same story as the Public Safety Campus. Things have gone up the, the last several months, but what we, we did here is we tried to break it down to help understand the different costs. So, City Hall and the parking structure split out is too different. Those could be phased. Doesn't necessarily all have to be done at the same time. One of the options that we reviewed early on with the city was to actually preserve the existing City Hall building that we're in today, and building the new proposed structure to the side to the north. And that does a couple of things. One, it allows for city staff working in this building to stay here until the new facility is ready, and then move over just once, rather than finding temporary facilities. It also gives the option of the city to do something else, either with this building or this land. It could be demolished, it could be repurposed, sold, things like that, and I think that can feed into some of the funding opportunities. So, the, the VROM project costs for this is somewhere in the $80, $100 million range for, for total project costs. One thing I'll mention, and we'll get into a little bit more, is you mentioned trying to do this project two years ago or five years ago. We, we looked at preliminarily, what would the cost be to stay in this building? And over the next 35 years, with different city staff across the city, there's a, there's a rough number of about $300 million in savings for 35 years to build this new project versus staying where you are. So, something to think about as things are being considered. So, that'll pass.
Let, let, let me just mention one more thing, if I can. I, I won't go through the slides for time, but an important component here is that the Biden administration, when they came in, put together what is a federal-wide initiative called Justice 40, and all communities need to be aware of this. This basically says that any federal dollars, any dollars, whether it's for this project or any dollars, the community must show how 40% of the benefit goes towards marginalized, disadvantaged, or underserved population. So, here's the bad part. Federal government doesn't have a single definition for it. So, what, what we've been saying to communities is identify what you would define as your underserved, marginalized community. There's a number of websites. EPA has one. This actually shows, shows Titusville. Anything that's yellow, orange, or red shows that you are considered to be, at least for that factor, marginalized, disadvantaged, underserved. Now, why do I bring that up? One, there was the BRIC funding that I mentioned before. This year alone, there's $2.23 billion available for grants. Last year's money that was awarded, 50% of it was tied to a community's Justice 40 objectives that that grant would support. So, I won't say the golden key, but a golden key, I will say it, I guess. Golden key is really to define that underserved, disadvantaged, marginalized community for whatever the factor, and how the grant that you're applying for will help to support that. The federal government is looking very, very heavily at that. So, I just bring that up. We certainly would love to help out in any way we can with that.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
I've seen a few of you doing something else.
He was about to give it back to her.
Go ahead, sir.
So, what I saw was about $143 million, right? I, I didn't see what the square footage was for the administration.
Sure. So, the, the City Hall is about 77,000 square feet, and then we have 620-something spaces, 640 is what we've got on there. I'm sorry. 100,000 square feet is for the City Hall, 640 spaces, and then we do have a line item in there to demolish the existing building if, if you chose to do that.
Okay. And then, what's the percentage you normally use for all the engineering, all those?
So, it depends what you want to include in that. You know, the numbers, depending on the scale of the project range, on the state's kind of DMS curve is somewhere between 6% and 10%.
10%, yeah.
If we go to the next slide real quick, we, we grouped a lot of If we go to the next slide real quick, we grouped a lot of what we call soft costs together. So includes the furnitures and finishes, design fees, permitting fees. We would hope there wouldn't be a lot of impact fees because it's a city project. But we do put a little bit of a factor for that. And then utility hook up these things that power utility might charge to add new service, things like that. So that's what brings, you know, construction costs for a new City Hall from about fifty-four million up to a project cost of eighty million.
Okay, so it was inclusive, for sure. I love grants. Yeah, for sure. I mean, you talk about that kind of money, and of course, people start saying, oh my God, that's a whole, that's a lot of money. But the bottom line, it was the bottom line, for sure. Jones, right?
John.
John, I'm sorry. When you were talking about taking care of those less fortunate, if you will, is there a correlation between the number in our population? We're like forty-nine thousand citizens. Is there a correlation of the number of citizens on, and the amount that you can actually get from the grant?
No, no.
There's no correlation?
But, but the correlation really is, if you have a large population of any of those factors, it could be people with asthma, it could be people without broadband. Whatever those factors are, if the community defines what are those factors you want to work towards, and the agency see that your grants are going towards that, that gives you a greater, that moves you up the line with those grants. And let me just say, the BRIC grant, you can get up to fifty million dollars per grant opportunity, and you can apply as many times as you want. So, you know, there's a lot of dollars out there. You don't want to swallow them all up at one time. But I think going after some very specific ones and then showing how it will support that Justice Forty is very, very possible.
Just so I understand, so part of what you bring to the table is to help us get those grants?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Member Stokel.
This is a tough question. In your opinion, if we were to move forward, what percentage typically do you think your clients get with grant funding?
That's a tough question.
I know. I see.
I really don't have an answer for you on that. It depends on what grant is, it depends on what it's, what the funding availability is. I think that's where working with the staff and identifying what parts we want to go after, you want to go after. And then very specifically identifying in that four-hundred-and-eighteen, you know, what you want to match best with that. And then having that Justice Forty plan, that every grant speaks to that same plan, I think will do, will do the city well.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a challenging job, I think, trying to find grants specifically for City Hall. But it's something that's needed and that we need to move forward with, but being able to...
Well, it was, it was very interesting to see that in this last session of the General Assembly, that there was quite a bit of dollars that was allocated by having House or Senate representatives put actual capital outlays out there. And so that may be something that, that the city wants to work with their delegation on doing quite a bit. And then the same thing at the congressional level on the EOC.
Yeah, it's just tough. I think sometimes, like, we get, government in general, I think we're stuck with older buildings, and it's tough to find funding for them. And then you're dealing with issues of potentially mold or leaks and lots of infrastructure. Yeah.
So when you speak to helping us with grants, you help us find them, for sure, because you've already given us some guidance. And do you work with staff to help write the grants?
We can certainly do that, yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I knew, I forgot what I was going to ask.
It's okay. All right. You good?
I know that...
Member Robinson.
He brought up something about tying it in with the economically disadvantaged or any, any need within our community would be a great approach to, because of the location of our present City Hall, so near some areas in our town. And I think that that would be a good tie-in to make it happen. And I agree with the Vice Mayor. I love grants. And I think that that would be an approach that you would, and I think it was stated by the young lady there, by me, said that you need to expedite that particular approach or get on that if you're going to move forward. This delay is your worst enemy in this process.
And I'll just make a real quick point. All federal dollars are going to be tied to Build America, right? So it's going to have to come from steel and other products, going to have to come from the United States. So that, that may cause a increase in costs as well.
Well, if you get a grant, that helps. Vice Mayor remembers?
I remember it now, for sure. Is there a possibility that you could have a developer to own the building and also utilize the grants to offset some of the costs? And we have some kind of lease purchase back from the developer?
So grants have different recipients that can go after it. Most of the time, it's going to be a jurisdiction, a city or a municipality. But I think there are opportunities out there to do that. We can, we can certainly look into that, yes.
Okay, because one of the things we did was, we didn't have any money when we started the charter school. So we had a developer, and then we leased back the building from them, and then we purchased it through bonding.
Good.
So, and that's, when you don't have any money, you know, that's what you have to do, so. Yeah. All right. Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm sure there's going to be a lot more conversation, discussion, guidance, and bond discussion. Yep. Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys being here. City Manager.
With that, we're on to item 4D, which is a presentation on the Sandpoint Park Stormwater Treatment. And Andy Janser will provide the presentation to Council.
Thank you very much, Andy.
And it's up. Honorable Mayor and Council members, I'm Andy Janser, Deputy Director of Water Resources. And I am a water environment process engineer as well. And I'm here to brief you on the stormwater treatment at Sandpoint Park. So I want to talk about what stormwater treatment you have there, how it works, and what our findings and recommendations are for our stormwater management program for Sandpoint Park. So starting with, the first slide is a map of Sandpoint Park, and it just kind of maps out the whited areas, are the drainage basins that include the Sandpoint Park, the Marina Boat Yard, and section across US-1 all the way over to the railroad tracks. So that's the stormwater drainage basin that comes in. It actually does carry quite a bit of pollution with it. This city has, it wasn't until nineteen ninety-eight, the city installed the first treatment device there at Sandpoint Park for that stormwater, and that was the West Pond. And that was funded with grant monies intended for treating stormwater. Before that, the stormwater just went to the Indian River Lagoon untreated. And similarly, in twenty thirteen, the East Pond was also built for that same purpose. And one other stormwater device that serves Sandpoint Park are the beam-up floating wetlands that went in last year. I want to, in this section of the presentation, I want to talk about a little bit of the biochemical processes that the ponds use to treat it. I mean, we see in the park, the ponds, they're beautiful, they have wildlife, and they're just part of the park. They're very nice that way. But underneath the water, there's a lot of biochemistry going on. And that was the purpose for those ponds being there, basically to take the phosphorus and the nitrogen out of the water. So there are basically three reactions that we use in managing the stormwater at this Sandpoint Park with the phosphorus. First of all, we convert the phosphorus to a solid and have it settle out. You settle it out of the water, then your water going to the lagoon is clean. The second process is, you know, phosphorus and nitrogen are fertilizers, and so they get uptake into the plant and animal food chains. So that absorptive activity removes it from the water and puts it into the plant mass. Happens with nitrogen as well. And another thing with the nitrogen is under the water, there are four, there are, there are six different forms of phosphorus that it jumps through, and it ends up as nitrogen gas. So if you see bubbles coming from the bottom of a pond, and it's not the aeration, that is nitrogen gas coming out, that's treatment. That's nitrogen leaving the system. And that's the whole goal here of all of these processes, is to get the nitrogen and phosphorus out of the system, out of the water. And what we're doing at Sandpoint Park is managing that so we're able to take that land mass, I mean, the plant mass that has absorbed the nutrients, and harvest that off and remove it from the system. So that's like an alternative to dredging. You know, dredging, you're removing those pollutants from the bottom by taking off the foliage and the roots from a floating wetland, then you're taking that phosphorus and nitrogen off in another way. It's actually more fitting with a park setting than to bring in dredging pumps and chuck it off to treatment plants and stuff. There's a lot of energy involved with that. So this is, this is the form of nutrient management that we kind of decided upon for Sandpoint Park to be more fitting with a park setting, more holistic in nature. This chart shows a graph of the data. In the past couple of years, we looked at a lot of data since the sewage force main spill of December twenty twenty. And here, I'm providing kind of a overview of all the treatment performance findings. This view, this graph shows the data for a thirty-five-year history, starting from before there was any treatment at all, and then, and then following the timeline for when we started adding treatment to Sandpoint Park. The green line there across the top shows the basic loading to the park. That's, that's in pounds per year. So that's eight hundred pounds per year of nitrogen that was loaded to the stormwater ponds. The blue bars show what came out of the ponds into the Indian River Lagoon. And you can see the bars stepped down over time. That's with each of the treatment processes that we put in, the two ponds, the floating wetlands, and a future process we're going to talk about soon. We're really bringing down the effluent nitrogen to very low levels. And the phosphorus is on there too, but it's, the scale is scrunched. So we're just going to talk about nitrogen. The phosphorus mirrors that as well in the performance data. So that kind of gives you a graphic of what's going on. The other thing I wanted to show quickly on that slide is the nitrogen coming in, the green line. Just to give you a scale of what the sewer, sewage spill, the loading of the sewage spill, it doubled the nitrogen loading on the ponds. But if you look at what's coming out, the nitrogen loading going to the Indian River Lagoon from that spill was greatly diminished because it was treated within those ponds. That was, that was a good thing for Titusville, that we ended up capturing it that way and treating it that way. Because that's a lot less nitrogen that went out onto the Indian River Lagoon. And same with phosphorus. Phosphorus is parallel with all that. So this, this slide shows two tables, and I just want to concentrate on the bottom line of both tables. It shows nitrogen and phosphorus numbers, and the percent that their impact on the lagoon has been reduced by the treatment systems that are there at the Indian, at the Sandpoint Park. So we've reduced, and actually, I can't, I can't read those numbers up there. But I have them here. So we reduced nitrogen and phosphorus by eighty-six percent and ninety-eight percent, the impact of those, of those nutrients on the, on the lagoon from the sewage spill by having that spillage come, held within the lagoons and treated with the lagoons, and also hauled back to the plant in, the certain volumes were hauled back to the plant. So this, these numbers reflect all those activities. So that was a great reduction, and I think Titusville should be proud of that. The second table, I think, is even more important because it shows the year-to-year nitrogen and phosphorus loadings to the lagoon. This happens year to year. And if you remember the chart, the sewage spill was double the annual pollutant loading to the, to the lagoon that comes from our stormwater. So the year-to-year is actually a big impact. And again, it's really great treatment levels, eighty-three percent and ninety-six percent. So we have a number of different treatment devices there at the pond that give us those results. This slide shows the findings of a environmental consultant study that we launched just shortly after the spill to try to get a feel for the impact of the spill on the lagoon, and just basically the overall health of the, of the lagoon treatment systems. I mean, not the lagoon, the pond treatment systems. So there were a lot of analyses that occurred. There's land surveys, samples, lab tests, stormwater modeling, and cost estimates. And there's a lot of data came in, that report was just released this month. I think that the findings were, that I want to highlight tonight, include the top line that was interesting, the West Basin, they showed decreased insides by twenty-two percent. And that was actually, the consultant didn't know this, but staff knew that was caused by sand and soil that was brought into Cofford Dam and due the force main removal project that followed the spill. That reduced size of the West Basin by twenty-two percent. But the important findings did not decrease the treatment capability of that system. So that shows just that there's a lot of reserve capacity in those ponds because of the water biochemistry that's going in here inside the ponds. And so that, that capacity is good to know that's there, and it's going to keep on, it's going to keep on giving us good removals. And then I'll go through the, the last item on the slide was, was an important finding from the consultant. They did a cost estimate on dredging. Dredging has been brought up as an alternative for moving the nitrogen and phosphorus from the system, where we've opted with using floating wetlands and harvesting the vegetation. And the dredging, during a life cycle analysis on an annualized basis, we took their cost estimate data and annualized it. And you could see that the floating wetlands have an annual cost of sixty-six thousand, and the dredging have an annual cost of a hundred and ten thousand. So the floating wetlands have a win out on a life cycle analysis. It's less, it's less expensive to do it that way. Item four at the top of the slide, just wanted to mention that DPW is planning a second generation baffle box for twenty twenty-four, and they have secured funding for that. I bring that up because that has, it's a next-generation baffle box, baffle box type of treatment device that has absorptive materials. That is yet another way to remove nitrogen and phosphorus from the treatment system before it gets to the Indian River Lagoon. So again, this is another alternative to the, to the dredging alternative that we've kind of incorporating into a more holistic plan for managing the stormwater. And this is the last slide. So kind of the takeaway of those three items there, pointing out that we had substantial reductions in the sewage impact by having that, having that sewage impounded in the treatment ponds and having them treated there. The second item being, our year-to-year nutrient removals at those Sandpoint Park treatment ponds are really substantial. They're excellent. And that's something for Titusville to be proud of because, you know, the ponds are now, you know, they're part of the park, and they're really doing a great job to the adjacent lagoon as well. So it's, it's kind of nice to have it all working together. The third thing is based on our life cycle analysis and our functional analysis, we find that our current management plan of using... Um, we find that our current management plan of using the floating wetlands, having that plant mass taken off, harvested a couple of tu, years, a couple of times a year. And, and that happens year after year after year. So you're moving that phosphorus and nitrogen from the system on a continual basis. If you're dredging, you dredge and then you wait and it builds up, builds up. This is more, it, it's just continually taking it out. So it has a, it has a, again, a more holistic um involvement with, with the system. Um, and so that's kind of the takeaway from this presentation. So, um, any questions?
Yes, several. Um, first of all, I appreciate your report. I appreciate the passion and ownership you have with this. It's obvious to me. Um, so the first thing is nineteen ninety-eight was the first stormwater treatment uh effort in that area?
Yeah.
So that's just twenty-four years?
Yeah.
Okay, a lot of things happened before that. Specifically on dredging, it's always been a, um, question of mine and how it works. If we don't dredge, is there a depth concern in the ponds, in the stormwater ponds?
Depth?
If, is there a depth concern? And I got more questions, so I'll get to that.
Uh, no, no, the short answer is no, because if you remember the one slide that showed the floating, the, the floating wetland with all the vegetation above and below.
Absolutely.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a continually changing uh cycle where, with a
Chemically and biologically, I think is what you're saying.
Yeah.
You, you've got to balance doing that instead of dredging.
Right, right.
Um, but if we, eh, how deep should a pond be? How, how deep should a stormwater pond be? What's, is there an answer to that?
Um, they were, they're at a good depth now. There, there's a lot of variability as you, and a, a good answer that would be looking at the finding from the consultant that showed that we reduced the size of one pond by twenty-two percent and it didn't do anything to the treatability of the pond. So again, it's more, what we're doing there is we're harness, we're, we're giving a reservoir for the biology and the chemistry to take out the, the fertilizer from the water. And um, so you can do that in a, in a very confined space like we do at our treatment plants. We use the same process at our treatment plants. It's, it's just happening in a bigger space.
And you're clearly, I have no doubt you're doing a good job. You've got the biology, the chemistry, I appreciate all that.
Yeah.
Um, how deep are our ponds? Do we have a, a prescribed depth that we'd like to have our ponds?
That is more of a stormwater question because I don't really get into the design side of it. So I, I would have to do.
Do we have a, go ahead.
I mean, it really depends. Most of our wet ponds are going to be over six feet deep because you got to maintain them in a wet state. You don't want them to dry out, so they're puncturing the water table on purpose. You're building capacity above the water table, using the water table to help treat the water. So, but you can get anything from a six foot deep pond to a twenty foot deep pond. Um, you know, senior centers are much deeper facility. Dre Field's a shallow facility. Our alum system is only a few feet deep. So we have a lot of variation, depends on what they're designed for and how much treatment you're generating in the pond itself and their use. And then you flip it to the other side where we have purely dry ponds. We have a lot of uh developed space that is dry ponds only, which they dry themselves out on purpose.
Right, right, yeah, I've certainly seen those. I guess getting back specifically to um Sandpoint Park, the concern as we get ready to enter into a, a, a rain event for the ages, when, if the pond is not at a, a, a reasonable depth or a defensive depth, so to speak, and I know it's not something that happens all the time. When the water overflows from the stormwater ponds and let's just say Sandpoint Park, where does that water go? Uh, yeah, I, I'm assuming somehow to the lagoon.
Yeah.
Okay, when that happens, is that water um in, in a good state to go into the lagoon? Or is that a problem every time we have a big storm? And that's where the depth of a stormwater pond comes in.
Yeah, but that's where you're talking about the, the loading to the, to the lagoon only occurs during, during water, during wet weather events. So during, when it's not raining, you're not really getting a discharge from our ponds. So that's why the, the loadings are looked at an annualized basis. So it, it understands.
And, and again, let me, let me say, your report was great. You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
There has to, eh, I, I would have to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say there was a concern, if we had a little more depth, a little dredging. I see the sixty-six thousand dollar uh annual uh cycle costs for the floating wetlands, which are great. I give, I, I'd give our city and our staff and, and our council even to, to credit for moving in that direction. Uh, we have more baffle boxes in the Titusville area than Palm Bay and Melbourne combined. We care. Those are like pool filters if you don't know what a baffle box is. I, I think we certainly care. I just would like to know if there's uh an advantage perhaps to a little dredging and keep a certain depth too. We can't always keep the water from overflowing. I get that, this might be a perfect example of that. But if we don't, do we even know what the depth is?
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Do we know what the, the depth is?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there was a mathematic survey during, during this where they actually surveyed the bottom of the pond as it sits. So.
Okay, good. And again, I want, I want to make it clear that I, I think we're doing a great job. I can throw more examples out there. There will always be people that say, you're not doing a great job. I'm just telling you, I think you're doing a great job. But I certainly have that dredge part where it's like, you know, I'd like to see, you know, if need be. And maybe only certain times a year. And maybe like when we have a situation like this, maybe just a certain time of year. I'd like to see that to be become part of the, the battle maybe. But I, I do think we're doing a good job. We clearly care. We have a staff that cares and is on top of it. Um, is, is there anything you want to add to that uh dredging on occasion?
Yeah, the, I, I think the, the one thing about dredging is you're not necessarily adding uh an abundance of capacity to a pond with a dredge. I think what you're thinking of is a way to prevent an outflow of water.
Absolutely, that's exactly right.
So, so a typical pond is designed for a twenty-five year storm. What we're about to see is a five-hundred year storm. So to put it in a magnitude, the last time we had a major hurricane, the entire Sandpoint Park turned into a pond.
Exactly.
So to keep those ponds where they're flowing, we would have to construct it that way. So you could look at those ponds and make go up four times or more in size, sheer size. Not dredging, but the sides have to be made larger. You have to create more water storage space. Um, so I think that's, when you think of trying to prevent an outfall, there's a constructed weir at the end of the system that's holding water back every day on purpose, helps create the wet environment it is.
Okay.
If that weir was raised, we would flood the parking lots and the playground areas and other things and turn them into a stormwater facility. So you would get no outfall and it'd all be held on the site, but at the sacrifice of the acres that goes with it. And just not a typical for what's considered to have a um legal positive outfall, meaning the drainage system has always been allowed to leave to this point in the river. If it didn't have that, by law, they'd have to hold, we'd have to hold a hundred year. Again, a hundred year storm in about two days, that water would be leaving regardless. Uh, but, but that's what, I think the dredging in this case would give you uh water quality benefits. It takes away a, a soil in the bottom that may have a material in it, restores the water quality pooling that was there. But I think from a water quantity standpoint, the amount of water it holds, you wouldn't see a lot of benefit from a dredge. It'd be a minor uh change in the volume. You probably, as you dredge it out, you see the permanent pool with lower.
Okay.
To, to equalize the lost volume below, you would really have to build a, a larger pond facility.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Clears a few things up. I just hope our storm's not a five-hundred year storm or really. Member Stokel.
Yep. Thank you for the presentation. This is not my area of expertise, so anytime I get a little bit of education on this, I appreciate it. Um, I wanted to speak to the chart you had, which was very beneficial for me to look at with the blue lines of nitrogen and phosphorus. Um, okay, so when I'm looking at those numbers and how it's gone down, am I looking at how much overflow has gone into the lagoon? Or am I looking at the water quality that has gone into the lagoon or a combination of both?
Um, the bar, like those blue bars that were dropping down?
Yes.
That's actually the quantity of uh nitrogen per year that was leaving into the lagoon.
Okay, so that would be like, we've had less overflow going into the lagoon. But the water quality has potentially stayed the same, just less overflow? Or, does that make sense?
The overflow, we can kind of assume that the overflow is the same every year, just, just for um averaging purposes. And basically, it, it was, it's just a, a stronger amount of nitrogen that's in the water when it's not treated as much. So when the bars drop down, we are really talking about lower levels of nitrogen in the water.
The quality of it then, okay.
So it is a water quality, that's how we look at it from, from ponds. We do it on annualized basis, but yeah.
Okay, so minus that break we had in twenty twenty, we have been gradually getting lower, it appears.
Yeah.
Um, would it be safe to say the goal would be to have both nitrogen and phosphorus at zero?
Uh, that's not, um, that's not part of uh treatment processes. Like even, even treatment plants, which is highly mechanized, there's always some level because we're using biology and chemistry to take it out, but uh you can't, you can't take it entirely out.
Because there'd be other impacts potentially that would be negative? Or it's just not possible to take it completely out?
Oh, you could, you could run it, you could add a bunch of gadgets and run it through filters and things like that. And, but it would be cost prohibitive.
Okay, so.
You have as much stuff in your park as you do a park, you know.
Okay.
It'd be a big plant.
Okay, um, my other question, can you speak a little bit just as to why the B mats were recently removed? From the pond at Sandpoint?
We were asked to uh get rid of the duckweed.
Okay, that's kind of, I wanted to see if we could have that discussion a little bit. Maybe not at this presentation, but I feel like that's another, I don't want to say issue, but like, yes, we'll have citizens complaining about other aspects. And then we're implementing B mats that are helping with other areas and how to balance competing interests, I suppose.
I get up with that. They were reinstalled not too far after they were taken out. They just, when we put a boat in a pond, when we have to navigate around those islands that are anchored in the ground, that doesn't help them or us. So for us to be able to, to uh clear the surface of the pond quicker.
Okay.
They, uh Steve Beaman, who owns the company, removed them. He has an easy process, they reinstalled them, they left anchors in place. So, and I think he actually harvested them at the time, he mowed them.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a balancing act, you know, we don't chemically treat the ponds any longer, so things like duckweed are going to happen and the methodology for moving them is mechanical now. So boats don't like having uh islands in their way when they're working, so.
We also have a, a bubbler going in, on the west pond as well to help try to dissipate the duckweed.
Okay, um, and then I guess moving forward, I know we have the baffle box planned for twenty twenty-four. Do you feel like there's a need for more efforts? Do you feel like we're on a good trajectory as far as keeping the water quality at a good level?
Um, I think, again, this is, this is probably measured against the whole stormwater program, but I think it's a good example of, of uh, of the treatment level that, that were our, our treatment goals.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I don't even know where to start with you. First, first of all, uh, tell me again what your background is? Your background?
My background?
Yeah.
I, I said a water environment process engineer.
Okay, did you go to school for that?
Yep.
Yeah, that, that's my point. Um, your presentation was excellent, uh, for sure. It answered a lot of questions uh because there's a lot out there saying we need to do this and we need to do that. And um, the mayor actually alluded to it when he started asking about dredging and, and all of this stuff. Um, but the bottom line to me is when I hear you present and hear your passion about what we have today, uh, along with what Kevin is saying, I feel very comfortable with doing what we need to do. My question to you though is if you were king for the, the day, is there anything else you would like for us to be doing uh with those ponds?
Actually, um, I'm, I'm really proud of, of, of that whole setup. I wasn't in, involved with designing it, but the way it's been managed and um I was actually said, hey, Andy, come, take a look at this, I'll go through the data, look at it. I, I just, I just like everything that's there. I think that's a real, it's, it's a good way to manage uh stormwater treatment in the community. I don't like going with, with high energy, chemicals, all that stuff. Um, I like, I like more holistic systems and uh that use natural systems and are low, have low energy demands.
Now, that, that's a, a good point. You, and you've mentioned that a few times about being a holistic system. It's a natural system that does exactly what we want them to do. The challenge that we have is, you know, citizens want everything to go inside there. Uh, work its way and then you get clean water that's going out into the Indian River Lagoon and that's impossible.
Right.
Especially what's about to happen in the next couple of days is definitely uh impossible. But as far as you are concerned, as a reasonable person and someone whose background is this, we are doing what we need to do to uh make sure we're cleaning up the Indian River Lagoon, are not contaminated at any more than what we have to. That, that, the thing that you did say that caught my ear also was the fact that you said um when they investigated or they did the audit of, of the pond, um, they didn't know about, I don't know if they knew about the spill, but um we actually put in some stuff that they didn't even know about.
Right.
Uh, which we knew about and even though it's twenty-two percent of it um came as foreign matter, if you will, the pond still did what they were supposed to do and we still had capacity.
Yep.
So in your um estimation, we are doing what we need to be doing to ensure that we're not contaminating the Indian River Lagoon.
Yeah, and we're, and we're, and we're still watching it. And then one of the things I was going to bring out, but I chopped it out to keep it short, was we're going to be looking at the um, the nu, the nitrogen and phosphorus taken off of our harvest from the, from the B mats um year after year. And that'll be a good indicator uh regarding the uh, just the performance of the ponds for time. It's a really good dipstick on that.
Okay.
Um, there are, there are so many things you can measure in the pond. And what that study said is we measured a zillion things and the data's all over the place, so we don't know what to tell you in, in simple language, I mean, we use fancy words, but that basically is, was the findings. But with the B mats, we're, by taking, by taking these annualized uh nutrient numbers, pounds per year of, of nitrogen phosphorus, we can, we have a very steady barometer as to what's going on with those ponds. And so we'll be relying on that year after year.
Okay, the last question I have for you, uh, when it comes down to dredging, if you will. Um, and I think it's, it's, it sounds good because we are cleaning up all the contaminants that came down to the bottom. But in fact, there is uh enzymes and other things down there that's actually helping the pond do what it's supposed to do. Would you say that?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a, yeah, there's the uh environmental impact side of dredging where it does have a negative impact on the natural system that's sitting there working for us.
Right, right.
Um, and, you know, one other concept of dredging is there is, there is like the um, you, you could, you could dredge, get it all cleaned out. Um, and then in a couple of years, that, the, the, the uh flux is going to be back there. The, the um, the muck is going to be back there and it'll build up quickly. Um, because that's just how, what natural systems do. They try to fill the voids of what's needed, what's not there. And so if you have a, a stormwater related scour, that does the same thing as a dredge and it happens all the time. You have a high storm, it's going to scour out some of that, some of that flux. So if, if you're going to go in and spend eight hundred thousand dollars to get that out, a storm's going to do that for you, not, not as intensively, but in, in another, you know, in a certain level, that's happening anyway naturally. So you have to kind of consider what's happening naturally in your stormwater system. That's, that's, has big loads once in a while and it's going to flush it out.
Yeah.
And whether you're using your, your resources correctly to take it all at once like a storm does and then wait for it to build up versus taking it out year after year, couple of times a year with harvests. And you're taking out those, those uh nutrients on a more regular basis.
Okay, my last words is well done. It, you definitely answered all the questions that I had for sure. Thank you so much.
And as I started my questioning and Vice Mayor followed that up, you have a passion and an ownership for what you do there, as does Kevin and our whole staff. And the, and, and even with the questions I ask, and I kind of have more of a concern about the depth sometimes and probably because of the week we're getting ready to have, kind of makes you think about it. Got some good answers over there. But even in our discussion, it, it takes us to all the different things we're doing. And again, I would, I would put our efforts against most any city I know of. Um, and clearly, and, and you measure, and you don't measure, but you uh, I guess measure, you, you take samples of that water on a regular basis.
Yeah.
So if it does go into the lagoon, you know what's going in there. You know what the balance is.
Um, actually, the, the BMAT numbers per year is going to give us a better vi- vision of that than.
But we do have numbers of what's going on in there.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Member Robinson?
Yes, uh, all of that discussion was good and it answered all my questions. But the cost effectiveness uh is, is my one question for you is, is that I, I know what dredging is and you were saying it, it takes all of the muck that's at, at the bottom uh out and uh, but it really doesn't do anything to help the quality of. do anything to help the quality of the water in the long term. The BMAT, but it's doing a good job at doing that. So, if we, if we dredge them, it does not eliminate the need for the other processes, does it?
That's, that's, that's exactly my point, and I always look at what happens year after year, what happens day after day, not you dredge once and you wait 10 years or 20 years or whatever and dredge again. I just look at it as what happens over time, and next year, you're going to have the same, you're going to have the same situation.
Right. Thank you. Okay. I see no more questions. Excellent presentation. Again, I use the word passion and commitment, and I love the way, the number of times you said how proud you are of that area. Take that personal. Thank you. Senator Manion?
Last item, sir, is petitions and requests from the public present.
Petitions and requests from the public.
Stan Johnson, 860 Pointset Avenue, and I'm here to talk about, we're talking about public safety and hundreds of million dollars possibly being spent. And just in the last few days, we had a photo in the newspaper of the floor today, and the photo was of this. You've seen this before. You've seen this before. It was, this is a sign that was removed by Mr. Larisse. This is a public safety sign that says ponds are hazardous waste. It was in the, we had him around the ponds in Sandpoint Park. I said, "We." This sign is of particular interest because we have a violation of the consent order, and this is signed and sealed, this is sealed by me as a professional engineer, on December the 22nd. It's so, it so happens is that the consent order that was approved by the city said that sewage stopped from this spill on December the 19th, but this says it didn't. It didn't, and this was in the newspaper. I'm especially interested in showing this to Mr. Jordan because I sent an email to him on September the 20th and also copied to you, to you, and it's about some complaints that were done about, here's a letter, you've heard this before, and we're talking about public safety and millions and millions of dollars and how you're going to spend it. I had days' worth of migraines, nausea, and others reported vomiting, headaches, rashes, and even a few people went to the hospital with MRSA. And in this case is that the city did not respond to this, council did not respond to this. And then someone else wrote and says that I had burning eyes, ears, nose, throat, severe headache, nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea. And Mr. Jordan was also presented this as the chairman of...
The Board of Directors of the Hospital.
And so, this is, this is another, this is another sign that you've seen before. It has to do with spray women and children with sewage. And I would think that you should talk about this because this involves public health and safety, not just talk about these buildings and so forth, $50 to $100 million, but Mr. Jordan, I mean, you guys are living in a fantasy, it seems like, and that's why I'm wearing this shirt with Mickey Mouse on it, because you guys, this is some type of fantasy.
Thank you, sir.
I'm asking for another minute.
I see none. Thank you.
Okay.
Petitions or requests? One second. There we go. Pull that thing, there you go. There you go.
Hi, Lorley Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS. That was a great presentation on the new city hall, and I loved how they were talking about all the grant money that's available, and there's grant money available for environmental stuff too, it's coming out of the same pots. So, you know, we have an opportunity to get some grants for some environmental stuff. I want to talk about what's happening in Mosquito Lagoon right now. There's seagrass everywhere, the southern end of Mosquito Lagoon, monstrous amounts of seagrass, you know, there's over 800 manatees that stayed here all summer and they have plenty to eat, there's tons of seagrass washing up on the shoreline. Well, guess what they don't have in Southern Mosquito Lagoon? They don't have stormwater ponds that dump into the Southern Mosquito Lagoon. So, you have seagrass that's coming back like crazy in the Southern Mosquito Lagoon, none seagrass coming back in the Indian River. So, for DEP, at the beginning of the introduction for the BMAT process, it clearly says that the BMAT process is not enough and that cities and counties need to do more than just the minimal that's required by the BMAT process to try to, try to help the lagoon. And all you got to do is look at what's happening. We've been doing BMAT for what, 20 years, 30 years? I don't know, 20 to 30 years now, and the lagoon just keeps getting worse and worse. So, we have an opportunity, we have more of an opportunity than any other city in the county to do something other than dump stormwater into the lagoon, and that's a holistic approach. I like, you know, you guys like the word holistic, but we have a gigantic swamp in the middle of town that it's a forested wetland. We should be sending our stormwater into that forested wetland and in some of the other forested wetlands and in the, at Royal Oak, when the new developer develops Royal Oak, we should be trying to use those ponds and stuff at Royal Oak. We should be trying to figure out ways to, instead of arguing about testing the water that's going into the lagoon and does it have nutrients and does the ponds need to be dredged, we should be totally not even thinking about that process and trying to figure out how we can do it even better. And because, and I've said it many times, we have no circulation. What we put in the lagoon stays here for a year, a year and a half. There, it doesn't, it can't go anywhere. So, we have to stop putting stuff in the lagoon. So, we have an opportunity. If we did want to dredge the lagoon, I do want to say, we put a lot of nutrients in that lagoon with the sewer spill. They're still there. I love the BMATs, but if you look at how fast the plants are growing in the BMATs in the Sandpoint ponds versus how fast the plants grow in the BMATs in the Dray Field ponds, it's obvious that those ponds are still loaded with nutrients. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Petitions or requests? Mr. Klein, you confused me by being in the back. That's your seat.
That's right. But I didn't want to get in the way of the...
No, I know you don't want to be in that rap.
Right. Yeah, I didn't want to be in that demonstration. I just wanted to say, one of the things that I think is wrong with what hasn't been done yet on the ponds is they're not really being tested for what's going out. You know, BMATs, you can test what you're taking out of the pond into the BMATs, but I have contacted many people. There's no organization that I can find that is measuring the effluent going into the IRL from the ponds. I, I think if we had implemented testing the water in the ponds, the pollution in it, back when I first asked to do it in 2013, when they were beginning to build the pond, the East Pond, I was asking for BMATs to be installed in 2013. I was looking for a littoral zone planting around the ponds. I wrote request for it, but I sent it to Brevard County. I didn't know who was responsible at that time because I was fairly new. Since then, I've also been reading a lot of articles that retention ponds are not removing the nutrients that they were estimated to. A lot of these drawings that I saw that Andy Chaucer gave, you know, looked good, except, you know, over a 10-year period, there's no deviation from year to year. That's suspicious. Were these, were there actual measurements made, what was in the pond and how much was going out? I think what we need to do is establish a group that on at least a monthly basis measures the pollution and what's in the ponds and measures the outflow. You know, maybe if we're taking 10% of the pollution we're dumping in, out, that means 90% is going out still. I don't know what we're measuring because I, I can't find it. I've contacted DEP, I've contacted St. John River Water Management District, I've talked with MRC, I've talked with a lot of different people. I can't find anybody who's really measuring what is going from retention ponds into the IRL. BMATs do a good job at cleaning up stuff, but they may not be sufficient, and I think what we need to do is find out what are we putting in? This is where I see the problem is. And I make water quality measurements for MRC, and I've found that the Indian River Lagoon has been getting much worse since 2010. And that doesn't mean we're cleaning up more, you know, maybe we're pulling more out than we were before, but we're putting more in than we were before.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Petitions or requests from the public? I see none. 35? 35? Huh? 5? Next meeting will go at 7:35. Dismissed.